Was called the May 10, 2017 planning mission. We have to work.
So first item of business is agenda changes. Anybody have agenda changes?
I don't have any to recommend.
Okay, and the only thing I would recommend, I noted that you had town plan input from the select board after village growth area. I think we could either make sure that we leave time for that by setting a time limit on village growth area or reverse them. One or the other, either way works. So I think what I propose is we do village growth area first in case someone wants to come, things won't get reordered, but that we set a time limit maybe like, I don't know, somewhere between eight thirty and nine to cut off and discuss the next agenda item.
Okay.
All right. All right, next order of businesses, public comment for non-agenda items. Bill, I assume you're here for agenda items or just to listen or?
Um, I'm here because I thought I should make an appearance since I'm applying because it seems to be expected by the select board even though I've been to an awful lot of your meetings in the past. But it also to kind of catch up on what's going and, but that was, actually, I forgot all about the proposed changes to section five. I might have some input, but I wasn't planning on.
Okay, well, that's an agenda item.
Excuse me?
That's an agenda item.
Right.
We'll get to it down the line. So, all right, thank you. All right, so let's move on to village growth area, rezoning and design standards, continuing on official map. I think last time we had a pretty good discussion on intersections and what the official map does, and we need to continue from there.
Joe, could I sort of back up on intersection comments and make my feelings clear about two of them? Number three, which is where Silver Street comes off, number four, which is where Mechanicsville Road comes off. I want to be very clear that I do not support proposing roundabouts on either one of those intersections. There's public investment in restricted dimensions and a big grade change for number three, the Silver Street intersection. And number four, I think there are better solutions that we did talk about for number four, and it also has dimension restrictions, and that's right where the bridge crossing the canal is, and that's the high point of the one sixteen right there, which from my point of view makes creating a roundabout of any reasonable size impossible. And thirdly, roundabouts, in my reading about them and my understanding about them, are done to keep traffic moving smoothly, and this is, both of these are in the village where we want to be sure that traffic is controlled, particularly at number three, near the community school. And so for all of those reasons, I want to just go on the record that I don't want to recommend roundabouts at either of those intersections.
All right, you're on the record. I mean, we discussed this pretty fully last time, and I think we came to some conclusions about, you know, as a board, what we did and didn't want.
Right, I just want to have my vote clear that I don't think roundabouts in those two locations should remain as a possible consideration.
So I don't know if the rest of the board would want to reopen that discussion. We pretty much beat it, but.
I wasn't thinking that it would be reopened, just I wanted to make my position clear, Joe.
Okay.
Should the board come up with a position? Sorry, I wasn't here last week or last time.
You didn't read the minutes either?
You were going to call me out on that, weren't you?
We came up with a list of things we didn't want with regard to Mechanicsville, I think for Silver Street, and basically deferred to at least see what the scoping study said first.
Did you make it through all the intersections? I did read the minutes, but I didn't read them just before this meeting, so now I'm looking back. It sounds like you did.
We did.
Did we hit number six?
We had it, yeah.
Yeah, it was discussed in the minutes.
Stoplight possibly. And we added a number eight.
Which is really off the map at this point.
The Lampman, no, that was the Lampman intersection that Dennis suggested.
Right.
That we needed to say something has to happen there at that intersection.
Right, since it was something that was, we thought, I thought was going to happen a long time ago, but hasn't happened yet, so I might as well put it on the map.
What's the schedule for the scoping study that Maggie mentioned?
I don't think it's on the schedule.
What scoping study? There was one completed for one sixteen in the last year or?
No, it says from the description when the scoping study had not been completed yet.
Oh, which page are you on in the minutes?
Page three, middle of the page.
No, I remember that, let me.
Maggie G said that she's not comfortable with removing the roundabout from the description when the scoping study has not been completed yet. I'm wondering what the scoping study is all about.
That came from the one sixteen study.
Is that not finished?
No, that is finished. The one sixteen study is finished. If that, if that study called for further studies, which sometimes studies do.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
There hasn't been any further study of that intersection, but the larger one sixteen scoping study is, was completed some time ago, year.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. That's what I thought, but I wasn't. So there's some disagreement, it sounds like.
Well, I was uncomfortable taking it off, taking it off the table when, as someone else pointed out, we're not engineers.
Yeah.
So none of us is really capable of saying this is a doable project, this is not for whatever reasons. That's just not our, our job. So, yeah, that's why, you know, I'm not necessarily for it or against it, but I, I don't think it's our, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like you made it through all the intersections, and there's guidance in the minutes as to what you want to see in the draft. Remember, this is all you giving me instructions so that I can make a new official map, and you'll get to see it again and maybe debate some more, refine it a bit more before it goes into any kind of proposal to the select board.
Just to slip it in on the one sixteen study. The number one project with Silver Street intersection, next step is a scoping study. Initial cost thirty-five thousand, construction cost a million and a half. Study should wait until Charlotte Signal Project is complete.
So that was the Route one sixteen scoping study recommending further study of the Silver Street and one sixteen intersection. Further study for a roundabout or just further study for an improvement to the intersection?
I think it was for a roundabout.
When was that study done?
Couple of years ago.
It was just in the last year or two that we, that we completed it. It had been done five or plus years prior to that, and it had been updated just recently.
Was that done before or after the rain garden and the sewer structures under the road there draining into the rain garden were done?
I'm pretty sure the scoping study was finished after. Do you have the, do you have the scoping study up right there?
I do.
What's the date on it at the front end? First page probably has it. I think it was June of, and I just forget.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
The rain garden has been there for several.
Two years.
Just two years?
I don't think it's been there as long.
I think the rain garden was, what I'm getting at is the rain garden was done after that scoping study, the initial scoping study was done.
I'm not sure, but in any case, those are site constraints that would have to be considered for sure.
Would that rain garden have been done the same time as the one by the church? Because if so, that's more like six years.
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, so intersections, got it?
It's my two cents, I just think number three, I hear the concerns, but I think if we were considering roundabouts, three would be, I know what you're saying about traffic flow, but I think out of all those intersections, that's the most dangerous in terms of cars turning and people crossing. I do get what you're saying about flow, but I think it also slows traffic down. You know, you come down a Good Times Cafe, you want to take a right, you've got people coming off of Silver Street wanting to go left, you've got people coming around the corner, it can get hairy sometimes, just, you know, people not paying attention. So whether it's a roundabout or a light or whatever, I think that is an intersection that would need review for safety reasons.
I agree that there needs to be additional study on that intersection. I just feel the factors that are there now already and the investment that the town has made in that intersection and the dimensions that are available preclude trying to solve the problem with a roundabout. But definitely study.
Okay, so other facets of the map that we should really pay attention to here, certainly future community facilities, both in updating where we want them and being more specific in what they are.
And you spent last meeting primarily on these intersection discussions, right? You didn't get to the brown community facility?
We started talking about the brown ones.
You did.
Particularly that brown area that's just south of the words Patrick Brook, that big area.
Oh, right, right. Yeah.
We talked briefly about that, we talked briefly about lot one, but.
Was that the, were those to be the rec fields and how the rec fields are relocated?
I thought we got rid of that.
Let me, let me clear that up, if there's confusion. So if we're all looking at the official map, the brown area that John is referring to, just south of the words Patrick Brook on the map, that's on the Lyman property, it's west of Brett Grabowski's development, both his, both Kenny Drugs as well as the next pod of development that he's proposed to the west of Kenny Drugs, it's west of all of that. And that was originally put on the map back in two thousand nine with the thought that that would be the location for recreation fields. A wetland delineation study had been done, it was in the flood hazard area, but there weren't a lot of wetland impacts according to the delineation, so it was thought that's a logical place for rec fields. Since then, obviously, the Bissinette Recreation Area has come about, and that's located to the north of that, on the north side of Patrick Brook, so.
And a little further west.
And a little further west, so yes, on the, on the official map, if you're looking at, looking at that, the Bissinette Rec area is in that white space bounded by the red dotted line to the north and west of, of the brown area we're talking about. So if, if the purpose back in two thousand nine was to make sure there was a place for substantial recreation area, we have a new place for that, and it's partially built. So we ought to, the official map should reflect that, that it's in town ownership and what's going on there. And the question is, the western side of the Lyman property, is there still a need for there to be a community facility, given that what was initially thought is going somewhere else?
What could go there if there weren't community facilities? You say it's in the flood plain?
So the, we have a development master plan for that area. When Brett Grabowski came in front of the Development Review Board for the next phase of the Heinsberg Center project, that was discussed. His proposal was for a portion of it to be a solar array and for a portion of it to remain in agricultural use, maybe some kind of small scale ag operation. There was talk about possibly, there was talk about retaining access to that property from the road infrastructure that would be built to serve the neighborhood that he's looking to build, and also having room for some parking on the front side of that lot in case they wanted to have some sort of public use. So a number of things were discussed. None of those were locked down, those were just ideas that were part of the conceptual master plan. In terms of site constraints, it's entirely in the flood hazard area, so the ability to place fill or do significant excavation is limited. It's possible to do some, we don't prohibit that in the flood hazard area, but it's, it's more problematic.
Does he own that?
He does not. He has, he has an option on it or a contract with, with David Lyman, so the Lyman still own it.
What about the green area to the south of that? We also weren't sure as to what does that mean?
So the green or turquoise area south of the brown area we were just discussing is an area that used to be owned by the town, but has since been sold to the property owners on the west side of Farmall Drive.
Oh, that entire piece? I hadn't realized that was so large.
Yep, so I think that was a five acre piece, might be a little smaller, I forget exactly, but it was on this map at the time because it was town owned. It's no longer town owned, so it's going to come off the map. We could still plan for something there, but originally it was given to the town with the idea that it would be a rec field. And as it turned out.
That would also be a rec field.
Yep, but as it turned out, when we did the wetland delineations, that parcel was chock full of them, and the Army Corps of Engineers said, no way, no how are you ever going to do a rec field there? So that was part of the reason that the town sold it back to the neighbors, is that they had an interest, they would, they wanted to buffer their, their interests, and, and so it went back into private ownership.
So what could happen on the turquoise?
Given that it's entirely in the flood hazard area, and at least last time was delineated, was a lot, there were a lot of wetland areas, very little. And I think that the landowners, for theirs, the folks who own it now, are interested in seeing it remain largely as is. There is an option for the town to have, you know, a trail connection through it, and they're fine with that, the landowners.
I mean, that's all I see really is.
I think they bought it.
And even more with the, with the brown, if, if, you know, just a path along the, along the river, maybe.
I think they bought it to exclusively not let solar panels or any type of development back there, to keep the views.
Or a dog, people have been talking about a dog park, and I think they did not.
After the recreation field idea for that property fell through, once it was in the town's ownership, there was talk about possibly that being a location for a dog park or another set of solar arrays similar to what's near the lagoon. And I think Jeff's totally right, I think the landowners thought, we're not really interested in seeing either of those things there, would the town be willing to have us take back control and ownership, we'll pay taxes, and, but we don't want to see those things, so. It wouldn't be suitable for a dog park, given the wetness and all of that, so.
All of that would be going downstream to eventually into Lake Champaign.
I think that it's a good conversation, both of those areas are going to come off the official map unless you feel like there's a community facility that's necessary there. It is highly constrained land, so it's not like we're going to be building community facilities in the way of brick and mortar in those locations, but they could serve in some other green space function. What remains to be seen is whether they need to do that in a, as a community facility versus, you know, a private farm or solar array, you know, privately owned, that sort of thing.
Would, I'm just, in terms of solar arrays, I'm, I'm wondering, would there be any future town need for large solar array?
Um, yeah, good question.
Town, oh, town hall or, you know, I, I don't, I don't really know what other.
I think there's more capacity in terms of town electrical usage that could be offset through additional solar arrays. I don't know how many. I think the real opportunity would be more of a community solar installation that residents could actually buy into, and I'm not sure that's something that the town would actually be involved in, you know, that might be something that the town could help encourage, but I'm not sure we would own the property or even be involved in the dealings with that, it'd probably be.
But you said it was on the master plan anyway.
The master plan?
Master.
Oh, for the, that, that the developer has for the property?
Right.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a very conceptual level master plan. He, as a developer, hasn't had a lot of experience with large solar arrays, so I think he put it on there as an idea, but I'm not convinced that it's really going to be a reality.
It is written on his master plan or notes to his master plan indicate possible solar array?
Yep, mm-hmm. And it doesn't take up the entire brown area, it's a portion of it, with the rest remaining in ag use. I, for my part, I think that with the Bissinette Rec Field up to the north there in that white sort of area, it makes total sense to keep the trail connections and to try to encourage some sort of, you know, public access through there, certainly the Bass Trail goes through there now, so in the wintertime, that's already happening thanks to landowner permission. But this concept of a riparian park, which is the purple crosshatch areas, you know, ever since that went on the map back in two thousand nine, I don't think anyone's been quite clear of what that really, what that really is, what that would really be. And so I don't know if, if that idea of having a green belt through there makes sense or, or if it's really just, if you think it's better just to say, hey, what we really want is a trail, or maybe a developed pathway, but that's really all we need.
Well, I'm definitely for a trail. I mean, we should be, I mean, we should be looking at buffering again and again as, as we, you know, as we've talked about before, right? So, I mean, all these waterways should get some treatment there. I don't know that it belongs on an official map, but we should make sure things pull away. As you noted, things are, you know, things are wet, so I don't know really how much development we could do there anyways. I mean, the one thing I was thinking about that maybe coincides with the trail is, you know, that dog park that gets, you know, continually kicked around. This is an area that is, you know, located adjacent to a fairly dense residential area, right, in an area that, you know, we want to, you know, make, make more dense for the village northwest. People keep animals, you know, this could be a, you know, I'm not, not saying the whole brown patch, right, we don't need the whole brown patch for a, for a dog park, right, but a substantially smaller area pinpointed for that in that region.
So I think that it's good to have specificity, a dog park is a very specific community facility, but I think we, that's a good opportunity to engage the Recreation Commission and ask them, you know, what they think on that front. To date, it, and Tom's here, so he can speak to it, I think that the dog park concept has really been advocated by a couple of citizens, and there isn't like a committee that has taken it on as a, you know, this is something that the municipality needs to be working on, it's been sort of a grassroots effort. Because of that, it's not clear to me that we need to be planning for one, but, but maybe we do, so. It's, it's, I think it's an open question as to whether it's, it's risen to the level of need that it, it ought to appear on an official map and impact somebody's, you know, development potential of their property.
I think the interest was for Joprag Park, for the dog park.
I know.
Yeah, that's the latest, Kathy Gutierrez is the community member who's been really advocating for it and working on it, and she, last I knew, she was working on Joprag's, but I don't know if it's even possible, given the wetland issues that cropped up with the gas pipeline work.
Well, the, the dog park would be in a different area, it would be in the field, which is technically wetland, but not, but it's low grade. But the Conservation Commission at the time was very receptive, it's just that the couple of people that had expressed interest sort of disappeared.
Yeah, I think Kathy had some health issues, and then, you know, she got back on it. Do you know, Tom, how she's doing on that?
On the park? I know she approached the select board about some of the funds for my gas, that wasn't necessarily received partarily.
Yeah.
Other than that, she hasn't done a whole lot, I mean, she's done some legwork, but she hasn't really come up with a firm plan.
Well, I guess the, the point for the official map is maybe, maybe one of us should reach out to Kathy and just see if Joprag's is really the place where it makes the most sense, along with the Conservation Commission, because if it is, then that, we don't need to put it somewhere else if that's the logical place for it.
And the only thing I was thinking is, Joprag's is a lot farther from, you know, kind of the center of the community.
It's true.
You know, if you want to take your dog up there, great, you're probably driving, you're probably driving through CBU corners.
Yep.
Right, I would think that, you know, the highest need to, to get dogs to run is going to be closer to, you know, higher density areas, and kind of like people to be able to walk to something like that.
Yep.
Alex, I note on map thirteen, which is Trail Network Vision, it's at a different scale, but I don't see anything indicating the trail that's shown on the official map running along next to the La Platte. There are these circles that indicate priority trail gaps.
Which version of the, of that map are you looking at, John? What's the date on it?
Maybe an old, maybe an old one, let me see. Ten, ten, sixteen, I think must be the date, it's kind of the number down at the bottom.
Huh, because, yeah, that had been noted by the Trails Committee, and I thought we had updated it to reflect that, but maybe, maybe not.
And in fact, the trail along Patrick Brook, which is shown on the official map.
Yep.
Isn't.
Yeah, I'm quite sure.
Maybe they're only talking about the gaps, you know, where there are not trails where there might want to be.
Well, and remember that they are looking townwide?
Yeah.
And this official map, at least the current one, is very much focused on the village, so there's a heck of a lot more detail on the official map with regard to that part of town that can't, can't be reflected on the.
The La Platte River, the La Platte Trail is, is on the updated map, which is on the website, February twenty seventeen.
So this, this must be an older map that.
I, I remember that when, when you as a commission forwarded to the select board the town plan proposal, there was a, and, and yes, Alex worked with the Trails Committee to make the final changes to that map, so that must have been.
I remember the circles.
That must have been the transition between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen version.
Okay.
But does the, does the trail, I mean, if we were to, if, if we want, you know, to put a potential trail here, and we decide to take it off the town map onto the trail map, does that have the same, you know, this is also a vision map, so. You know, thi- this is also a vision map, so.
Yeah, so.
Have any.
Two totally different documents.
Yeah, they are.
Trail vision map is a non-regulatory planning tool that carries li- little to no weight with regard to development review.
Exactly, so should we.
Development ru- review tool, it is a regulation, so.
So should we pu- be putting trail connections into the town map?
So that, the official map, you mean?
Yeah.
So that's a question that I think the trails committee would like to talk to you about, when you sort of have a first draft of the official map to, to review. Cause part of the reason that they haven't advocated for that is that they, they haven't felt, in the past, is that they haven't felt like. Um, the conversation was far enough along and with, with landowners and the community in general, and there was a. There was a desire not to strike fear in the hearts of, um, landowners who might be asked to provide easements across their property for trails. By having those things on a regulatory document that said, it's not a nice ask anymore, it's a thou shalt. Um, they, Lenore, who works in the office, is the chair of the trails committee, and we've talked about that in the office. I think she'd like her committee to talk about that some more and also come talk to you guys, you know, maybe when you get. When I get a, a, a first draft together and you review that at a meeting. But maybe it'd be good to close out the suggestion from Joe, though, cause that's a good suggestion, it's just, I was just curious as to whether it was gonna happen at Deprags anyways. You're suggesting, Joe, that it might be good to keep the brown area next to Patrick Brook, maybe reduce the size of it. So that it would be appropriate for a dog park, and then leave that on as a, as a possible future commu- community facility.
Right, I think, I think you definitely wanna reduce the size of it, if we keep it all, and, you know.
Be the mother of all dog parks, I tell ya. Big dogs only.
Curved line that distinguishes between the brown and the purple crosshatching, where did. Is that some feature that's there on the ground?
It looks like it should be, but I don't, I don't remember, John, to be honest with you, I'm not sure why, why the brown versus the crosshatching was shaped quite like that. It, it may be. Yeah, I'm not sure, it, it may have something to do with the flood hazard area and the, the confluence of Patrick Brook and the La Platte River. And the floodway, which is the area that you really don't wanna put anything in, cause that's where water is like. Not just slowly rising, but actually rushing during, yeah, I, it definitely expands at the confluence, so that, I would guess it's that, but I'm not a hundred percent.
There is, there is this, uh, water course that comes down and, uh, on the north side of, of. The, uh, Black Rock proposal, kind of where the trail is running along, next to that smaller brown area. And then it abruptly turns, must have been ditched.
Oh, yeah.
And goes south, is it possible that? That the definition between the village northwest and the ag land, it follows that line? I, I, my recollection was that, that housing proposal somehow. Was kinda straddling that line at times, between the village northwest and the ag land?
No, Black, Black Rock's proposal was to put everything in the growth area, yeah, so in the gray area that you're referring to. Wh- where there was slop over was, um, in the backyards of some of those lots. And in one of the original proposals, they extended in, across that white to gray line, but in their. Thinking their last sketch plan, which is the one the court ended up approving, um, everything was snapped to that line.
Even the yard, even the yards, so if you look at map one, again, not a regulatory map, base map. You can see, even though it's at a different scale, you can see that water course that comes down. From near CBU corner and then abruptly turns and angles to the south.
Yep. Yeah, those waterways have all been straightened and ditched long, long ago, and I'm sure that's why it goes in that direction.
Yeah, doesn't, it actually has a sharper angle than, than the line that distinguishes between the village northwest. And the ag land, which, which runs very straight, uh, to the south. You see what I'm saying, that, and maybe that, uh, blue line on map one is, is not. Totally inaccurate rendition of where that, uh, that straightened drainage ditch is. Looks like it parallels one sixteen, and here it clearly doesn't parallel one sixteen. I understand that map one is not a regulatory document, it's just, it's information.
Well, how would you, um, I, I guess in looking at this myself, um, and I, I recognize that there's. Private lands, uh, um, it seems as if, um, even, um. For the Heinsberg Village Center, say for example, um, the inference is from the most recently submitted plans that any development. Uh, of that brown area, um, say, with Patrick Brook at the top of it there, is. Never say never, but, um, this, the, the proposal that's out there. Doesn't look like anything's ever gonna get developed there, and so far as hard structures are concerned, maybe a dog park or something, but. What seems to be happening is that this whole swath along the La Platte is, um. You know, whether it's hatched, or, uh, whether it's green, or whether it's brown, there is a, an inference that. This is, um, wetter lands, um. Of some, you know, distinct natural purpose, and that even, you know, a walking trail, say for example, at certain times of the year, I'm sure is viable. At other times of the year, I'm, I'm sure you'd rather be walking on a boardwalk of some kind, um. And I'm just wondering whether it's worth it for this body to sort of consider that swath. As something that is more permanently just a passive recreation area and breathing room for that river to meander and move as it. Naturally wants to, I'm sure the conservation commission and others have more solid opinions on that than I might, but. Um, and does that have a place in the official map discussion as we're having it?
To be honest with you, Carrie Fenn was the planning commissioner who had the idea for these riparian parks, which are the purple crosshatched, or. I'm not sure if they're purple on yours, you have slightly different color scheme, but.
Purple and brown, oh, brown is sort of the.
Brown is something else.
Yeah, those crosshatched areas, that, that was her idea, was let's designate the areas that are unlikely to see any development anyways. Because of the wa- hydrology, and, and, and recognize that they could serve as, as. A riparian park, which could have some passive recreation, but also serve just to sort of allow those features to be. Um, it's, it's a nice idea, but at the same time, I'm not, I'm not sure what exactly we would do. With them, if somebody, if a developer will come and say, I have an idea for that area, but your official map says you have an idea, so I wanna make sure that. You know, I'm accommodating your idea, I don't know what I would tell them, like what our idea actually is, except for. Well, just don't do any development there, right.
Do anything.
And if it's a, if it's a do nothing, it doesn't really belong on the official map, it belongs in our regulations, cause the official map is about where we are gonna do something.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanna, wanna, you know, enumerate each one of these areas and. Be fairly specific about what our intentions are there.
Right.
You know, go through an inventory, you know, f- you know, list the facilities that we do want. You know, in the future, be it next year, or ten years, or twenty years down the line. And designate them into an area where we think they're gonna best serve the community. And I, I would agree with you, Alex, that, um, if we're talking about, you know, something that is. Probably too wet to build on, then the, the things that we could do with that are, are really limited to. You know, open land, minimal, minimal built infrastructure, um, you know, and there's a very limited list of that. Um, that we would want, you know, I would think that, the dog park is one of them, um, you don't need a lot of. Um, facilities there, some fencing, some benches, et cetera.
What is the, um, the buffer zone along the La Platte?
Um, the one that, when, when portions of this property were developed, there, uh, was written into, I think, both the Act two fifty approval. And our local approvals, that we were looking for a hundred foot to a hundred and fifty foot, um, buffer area. That would be allowed to re-vegetate, reforest itself, um, with the understanding that we might be punching a trail through part of that.
That a hundred or a hundred and fifty foot, is that, that same distance on both sides of the water course, or does that?
Both sides.
Right. So by the time you took out that a hundred or a hundred and fifty foot swath. Um, you're, you're doing kind of what you said, the regula- regulatory, or the regulations pretty much. Determine in large measure, sort of what's happening through there.
Yeah, I think so, um, within the village growth area, we have specific stream setback and buffer provisions that, that are, that seek to do that. Um, I think that's the appropriate place to tweak those, is in the, is in the regulations for how stream buffers are managed. But, if there's a specific community facility like a trail, that makes sense to keep that on the map in those areas. And then, you know, Joe's suggestion, if you wanna take a portion of the brown and call it out as a do- a future dog park. You know, that can be done as well, but I think, uh, I'd wanna talk to Kathy, actually, Gutierrez, about how big. Such a, such an object would be, wanna be on the map, my guess is that for a community our size, it would be pretty small. I, I, you know, I don't think we're talking about, uh, multiple acres of land.
Five acres?
Nothing like that, no.
In Maymore Dog Park, most amazing dog park. Has no fencing around it, it's so big.
Interesting.
Map seven does show wetlands and flood hazard areas, and through that zone, again, it's a different scale. You can see, uh, there's a fair amount of gray.
That's the theme of flood hazard, and what does that mean in terms of construction?
It, it means that, uh, the ability to place fill or excavate is limited. But the ability to use it as a flat surface, like a dog park, or rec field for that matter, is still possible. Uh, it's really the wetlands that, that create the most difficult situation for doing much of anything. Uh, so if it's merely flood hazard area, it's got some potential, but it's difficult to, like, create a parking lot with fill and. Or put a building on it, or something like that.
And, and what you're saying is that our regulations for the village area defines those, those wetlands. Quite specifically, we can't look at this map really and learn too much because of the scale difference, but we actually have. Words that describe.
Not, not so much the wetland area, but the stream, the riparian areas along the streams, how much of a buffer each of those.
Though, that's a definition in words.
Right.
The wetland area is mapped?
Uh, it's, it's mapped with that same data set, just you can zoom into it to see more detail.
Closer to it, so you can see more accurately where it is.
But that's, you know, those are based on, um, aerial photo interpretations and not on the ground delineations, so when a developer comes in and does a delineation. We get much better data about where the wetlands actually are.
But we certainly have suggestions here already as to where to expect that.
Yes.
To impact a development.
Mm-hmm. You ask Joe, everyone looks at you.
So I'm just, I'm looking at the, the brown, uh, brown spot behind town hall, where the. I guess there's still wells there, but they're not really being utilized, that, to me, would seem like a good place for a dog park, if everyone was to be built.
It's a good point, there's already parking.
There's already parking there.
Parking, it's as central as, as, as.
Right.
As anything.
Um, with regard to the, the bigger chunk around Patrick Brook, it seems to me, I know we're building this nice new facility for the Bissinette fields, but. Who knows what's gonna be coming down the line, as you might have heard, the baseball field behind the school is gonna be shut down, they can do nothing with it anymore. So that's gonna leave the town without a full-size baby Ruth, you know, the bigger boys' baseball field. So, potentially, that use, it is adjacent to the Bissinette fields, it would be an additional, you know, structure per se. Another field, but that might be a possibility for that.
In other words, the original thought was, let's put recreation fields there, the new thought might be, well, it's adjacent to a place we have rec fields. Maybe that's where we build the next set, if we needed more.
Be that big, that looks about ten or twelve acres.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
Just curious, why are they shutting down the baseball field at CBU?
It's, no, not CBU, Heinsberg, oh, ours, okay.
But why are they shutting that one down?
Well, it's been worked on several times myself, Adam Burrit had all put a lot of energy into it, and it's just, it's in a low-lying area. Everything that sheds off the roof and the parking area drains right onto it, so you can fix it, but it only lasts so long. And the outfield section is permanently wet, you can really, it's reached the point where it's kind of foolish to put any more effort into it.
Part of the problem with this Lyman property with regard to rec fields, even though we were thinking about it way back when, is that it is also very wet.
Right.
And low-lying, and in the flood hazard zone, and so, I think to create a, 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 uh. An easily maintained and, and long-lasting rec field, you're gonna wanna bring fill in and do some underdrains. And that will become problematic because of the flood hazard issues and the displacement of flood, so it's, it's a, it's a convenience spot. It's not a, it's not an easy spot, um, to do anything, uh.
Now, you're talking about the big brown area?
The big brown area, no, the big brown area, the area that Tom is referring to, behind town hall here, where the old wellhouse is, um. I, we, I don't believe we've done a, a wetland delineation for that property, I'd have to look back, we did do some in that vicinity. Cause there was ideas about doing more rec fields over there, um.
Is that town, town lot land?
No, no, the, uh, the Russell family.
Right, that's what you were talking about last meeting.
Um, but I, my memory is, is that when we looked at that area, there were issues, it's also in the flood hazard area. And, um, there were some wetland issues as well. I can look again, I, I think we may have a delineation for that from several years ago.
Is the crosshatching, uh, of the Saputo area, particularly west of the. The possible road right away, is that also then in the flood?
Yeah, except for the, except for the, the area where, if you're familiar with the property, either from the air or on the ground. Where their old sewer lagoons are, or were, um, that whole area has been filled, so that's the.
Already done.
Sort of where the black line comes in, the leader line for the note. The note that says wide variety of community facilities, where that black line.
North of the blue line.
Yeah, north of the blue line, that area is high and dry, because it's where their lagoons used to be, and a whole bunch of fill was placed there. Um, but that, that larger crosshatch area south of the blue line is low and wetland constraints. And flood hazard area again, so the ability to do much there is, is, um, limited.
And that's privately owned land, that's all part of the.
Yes, that's part of the, uh, cheese plant property.
Cheese plant property, right, okay.
So Alex, the, the riparian park near the Patrick Brook location, is that town land, or is that private?
No, that's, um, well, I shouldn't say that, some of it is, the, the portion immediately west of the words Patrick Brook. Um, which is, it, there's a lot of blue lines, so it's a little hard to make out, but this is the area north of the La Platte River. Um, that's crosshatched in purple but is white in the background, that's the Lyman property, so that's in private ownership. And it's the same property owner that owns the brown area and the area that's proposed for development to the east of that. Um, the, the purple crosshatched area on the south side of the La Platte River, that's, uh, background color is, is turquoise or blue. Um, or, I'm not sure what color that is, uh, that, that's, that is owned by the town, it's, it's immediately adjacent to the wastewater. Treatment facility, and we bought, um, some of that from the Eddie family way back when, so we, we own most of that.
So, can I just, and I, and I don't know how I feel about this, but, it kinda goes to Ross's point, I think it would be interesting to at least talk about. I know developers might cringe, but the r- the rare pin, the, the purple crosshatching. To consider connecting along Patrick Brook, going, uh. West to east, or east to west, whatever, but towards one sixteen and across, and then down along, along this part. Connect the rare pin parks, from here to here, to here to here, and have green spaces and wildlife corridors, you could. If you wanted to go really crazy, money's no object, you know, underneath one sixteen to allow wildlife or whatever. And wildlife corridors, you could, if you wanted to go really crazy, money's no object, you know, underneath one sixteen to allow wildlife or whatever, but. I don't know, I just, it's something to think about and discuss. It's, you know, I I can already raise a bunch of flags in my head why that probably wouldn't work out, but.
Well, so just to clarify, cause we we talked around this before, we have done that with regard to our stream buffer regulations. So we have in the village growth area specifically, not the rest of town. Um not just a stream setback, which says you have to stay this far away from the stream of the building. But actually, we have a stream buffer that says thou shalt also leave it nat- in a n- natural state so that critters can use it as a as a as a corridor. It's not called out as a community facility because we're we're not proposing anything more than trails along those quarters. So I think we've, I think we've nailed, I think we've covered that in the regs. I think if it were to be a larger facility of some sort um along that. Uh then it would be appropriate to put it on the official map, but if it's really just a. A a keep keep out of that corridor, I think we can, I think we've done that with the regs.
That's that's what I was just thinking of, you know, with all the the wastewater and water treatment. Things that are going on with the state to protect that as much as we can and just let it be natural is good and it gives you green space, which everybody likes and. You know, it just helps on multiple fronts.
Consistent with what you're talking about, uh something more along the lines of this narrower part. That that comes down uh and and crosses uh one sixteen. That that actually does go along Patrick Brook and connects here and that there's a similar band that comes down and connects.
What I'm saying is if you have your zoning regs with you, I didn't bring them down with me, there's a map in there that already does that. It's called our stream buffer map.
So is the, is by pointing out these riparian park areas, it's just because it goes beyond the buffer basically?
Yeah, yeah.
The concept of riparian park, you know, what that really meant.
There you go, that's what you're talking about and Rolfe's talking about.
And that's a different, that's part of our zoning, so it's not the official map, but it's it's a.
You know, like you said, the Patrick Brook area could be used for a dog park.
I think so, yeah. I think that uh you wouldn't be doing a lot of excavation or filling, if any, in a dog park. Sinking some posts maybe.
Yeah, the one issue, I I I was thinking that this could be a real good subject for a survey. Um and I say it because Giprag Park has been getting a increasing problem with off-leash dogs. Um and it's not just impact wildlife, it's on other hikers and kids and a lot of dog poop and. And I would be curious how many people who go go there um to exercise their dogs would use a dog park instead. And and having it on Giprag Park could create more complications. I I mean, we were nervous about that. I mean, I do like the idea of it. Being closer to the village, but I'm wondering, there would be an added benefit definitely to Giprag Park. If if a dog park here actually took those people who didn't wanna leash their dogs.
And gave them a place to run around? I've often wondered if um if having it located at Giprag's would actually help because then people could do both. You know, they could go for a walk with their dog on a beautiful trail and feel like they're getting some exercise. But if maybe on leash only, if that was the requirement, but then if they wanted to let their dog off, they could then just walk down the hill to the fenced area. And say, go play Rover and watch him run around and talk to their neighbor and have some coffee.
The the other sales pitch on the dog park is assuming its its mode is cut would be, wouldn't that be the tick problem?
Oh, that you do have at J- at Giprag's, yeah, that's a good point.
Plus you could have access to water. If you wanted to put in a pump or something, you have a water supply for dogs. You'd have that option in town versus. I mean, I guess you could, but you know what I mean, you're in the town growth area, in the village area, you've got more access to that sort of stuff.
So I can, or if somebody else wants to take it on themselves, I can contact Kathy uh Gutierrez and find out, you know, what. Uh she thinks of sizing, what she has been thinking of of a dog park size and uh. You know, consider it for for that area.
Which that, the large behind?
Creekside?
Yeah, the area we've been discussing with the words Patrick Brook written over a portion of it.
Well, I don't know Kathy, but I'm certainly willing to chat with her.
Okay, we'll assign you Barbara. I'll uh I'll forward you her contact info.
Thank you.
And another person very knowledgeable about dogs and so forth is Lisa Bear. She's, she lives in.
Yes.
But I think Tom's point is a good one that you ought to just percolate on. Whether maybe it makes sense to keep the whole thing the way it has been on the map, you know, for future fields. Just with the understanding that it's gonna be, it may be tough, you know, the the bissonet area was easier because it wasn't in the flood hazard. That was why it was so great when when Wayne actually first, you know, thought of this idea because. It was just outside of the village growth areas. It wasn't gonna impact, you know, the development potential. And it was, they had just redone the flood hazard maps and that area came out, used to, used to be partially in it, so. It was like no wetland or very little wetland, no, no flood hazard and immediately adjacent, but not right in the middle of. It was, it was, it was a sweet spot.
I can appreciate Tom's idea. At the same time.
I would, I would like the board to really think through, you know, each piece that we're putting on this map. Because I think we've learned since the original map that that um. You know, we should also be developing, you know, capital plans to pay for this if we're to be taken seriously. In the Act two fifty commission. And obviously, the bigger your your eyes are, the harder that bar gets. Because sooner or later, each one of these pieces of land is gonna have development pressure on it, or at least some are.
Yeah, and and I think that um it's just conceptual and I think Brad Grabowski as a developer would be the first to say. He's not sure if he's ever gonna do a solar array there or whatever else he's thinking of for this brown blob. But should you change this before his project, you know, goes through? The change would impact his ability to do whatever he wants to do there and the this whole concept that Joe's talking about. Would likely come up again, just the way it did with Hannaford.
Right now, the way the brown area reads there. He would not be able to do a solar array? Or he would, he and the town would have to come to some agreement about that or what?
I I think that um, I think that right now the language is vague enough that it's, it would be difficult to deny.
Well, I mean, it was difficult uh in the Hannaford case. With some loose language and this is as loose as that.
It's the same, yeah, yeah, it's the same.
It is the, uh I had a question for Tom about the rec fields. I thought there was a ball diamond as part of the rec fields at one time.
That's Little League field, which will be built. I have any inkling of trying to put in a full-size baseball diamond because I don't. But just looking at that brown area is just a thought that crossed my mind.
That could contain, i- if we could do the fill correctly and so forth, but could contain a a. Regulation baseball diamond.
It's certainly big enough, but as Alex describes it, it's probably not going to happen. I was just totally looking at just the acres just there. I wasn't. Considering any other features.
One interesting wrinkle, and and then I, I'm a little loathe to bring it up because it's uh, I need the Blackrock plan to show you, but. What what happened, so how do I explain this? Um the point that John brought up before, he was asking about, is the proposed Blackrock master plan showing development all the way up to. The border of the growth area, so right next to the rec fields. And I said, yeah, it uh it pretty much does. But when the lot was created for the rec fields. Um it, the property line that the town owns doesn't coincide with that zoning district line. It's a little bit to the west of it. And so Blackrock had a little bit of slop, a little slop in there. And and at the, in the beginning, the thought was, well, the backyards of these houses are gonna extend a little bit to the west and be in the ag district. And that'll be fine or whatever. Well, when it went through the review process, you know, people. There was some concern about having those lots extend over the line and Blackrock's solution was just to say, well, fine, we'll just snap them to the. The to the zoning district line and not have to talk about this issue. Well, when they did that, they created this limbo area in between what the town owns and the back of their project. And there's actually more room in there now. Um so at some point, I could, I could put that in front of you. And we could talk about whether you wanna tinker with coloring, doing some brown coloring. Actually adjacent to the bissonet rec fields that the town already owns.
So it's this sort of wedge shaped piece?
Yeah, Ralph, Ralph does have the plan right there, yeah. It's not big enough to do another baseball field. It's. It's actually not big enough to do um a full-size rec field, but it is additional space.
Oh, which is the backs of the the property houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they apparently stopped now, right on that line.
Yeah.
And the rec field development, including its parking and and Little League field, doesn't use that land. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's sort of, uh at the moment, until their planning goes, until Blackrock's plans make further progress, it's sort of leftover land. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It could, it could be used to bolster the rec area with some smaller scale stuff, just just like what you're talking about. Yeah, playground, tennis court, basketball court, that sort of thing.
Community gardens, parkour course.
Parkour?
What was that one, that other? What's that other uh ping pong kind of thing?
Pickleball.
Pickleball?
It it's not gonna solve the need for future rec fields, though. It's just smaller scale stuff.
Right, just smaller stuff.
Anyway, um so I think I have some direction on the Patrick Brook brown blob with Barb's help contacting Kathy. Did you wanna talk about, or have you already talked about any of the other brown blobs?
Well, we can sort of mention if that need enumeration.
Right, everything's gotta be numbered. I get it, Joe.
You know, we we sort of talked about lot one and what was around it. I think we need to. Take out the old police station.
And and it's in-town ownership, the rest of it, so the need to be specific is not as great.
That's right.
But we could certainly still enumerate what what's been, what we've been thinking of for that particular parcel, which just so everybody's. Can remind me if I'm missing anything. We've, we've talked about farmer's market, we've talked about a. A sort of a performance, uh music venue, outdoor. Um just general town green, I think, is what the principal discussion has been about in that area.
Town, town green and commuter. Yeah, commuter parking is included.
Yes, yes, behind the fire station.
Fire station. And a a small children's playground was also included in, as part of that town green.
Yep, yep.
We, didn't we talk to a little bit about this square up here, this brown square?
Are we getting to that? Isn't that?
Yeah, isn't, yeah, weren't we talking about?
Wait, help the rest of us know what you mean. Okay, so the brown uh rectangular-ish shape that is uh in the village northwest. District, west of one sixteen, south of Shelburne Falls Road. So I I think I gave you the spiel on this before, but that was, that was the select board at the time. Felt that that district, as a district that was gonna see dense village-style development, needed a central. Community facility to sort of ground it and to give people a reason to come to that area and not just the people who live there. So they wanted it there, they wanted one there and they wanted it to be sizable. This was supposed to be about two and a half acres. And they wanted it on high and, high and dry land so that anything could happen. You know, you could have a building on it, you could have good. Well-drained soils for a park, whatever. So now that the bissonet rec area is on the west side of all this, yeah, the question becomes, do you still want it? Do you still need it?
The notes.
Or should it move?
The the notes, number one notes up in the upper right-hand corner actually says, locations for future improvements approximate only. I would assume that that includes the brown blobs.
Sure, yep.
As well. Might that. Brown blob move, say, down to the intersection of. Uh two possible future roads there, sort of behind the property that uh Brian owns. More in the middle of the.
That would be more consistent with with Blackrock's master plan, actually.
Be going in that direction also and that's, that land is still high, it's not down in flood areas.
Yep.
I mean, I would think that. The DRB and the select board would would recognize the fact that, yeah, we didn't mean that it had to be right there. You could move it somewhere else within your overall general plan, so maybe we don't, maybe we don't move it as part of our modifications to the.
Well, I think if you're, if you're agreeable to the, to Blackrock's conception of of this central organizing green space. You could just snap it to what they proposed. If you don't like what they propose, then by all means, make it a little different and then, you know, as they go forward.
Be more specific about, it's gotta be here.
Yeah.
Is, does it show up? Uh does there open space show up on that plan that you have, Ro?
Not in that area.
Really, cause they, it doesn't go that far.
It does. It's it's all residential up there.
How about here?
That, that's where they propose it, is there and to the uh.
West, east of that.
Yeah, to the east.
There and there.
These two areas, so they took what was a two and a half acre chunk that was on the official map.
And distributed it down.
In a place that Nike can't see because I'm pointing at the sheet, you can't, and just pushed it south and turned it and split it with a road.
So they're facilitating this brown spot with that long, long linear green.
Exactly, yes, that's your, hit the nail on the head. They have a long linear green as part of their master plan and that's, that's their idea of how the brown. Spot on our official map should be accommodated.
And how, why is this linear green?
Yeah, good question. Um I don't know, I'd have to get their plans out. I'm I'm happy to shoot you that information later.
There's no graphic scale on this one.
Yeah, I don't have their plans handy.
You know, I I I think I I do echo the select board's concerns in wanting something.
It is going to be a people draw, not only for those who live there, but but others. You know, I also think that we need to um. You know, again, be fairly specific about what we want. Um in terms of a facility and and, you know, how that functions.
Well, maybe that's what you should be talking about then, is what, what would a facility in that part of the village do? And then that would help define whether it can be served by a long linear green as Blackrock's proposed or if it needs to be something chunkier.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I had this, I had this concept that I I talked about last week about.
If we were to configure, you know, one or or perhaps two. Um green areas into the master plan, we're essentially bordered by roads. All right, so you know, if you think of a um a green block with roads. Parking, parking around the green block, right, and then facing the green block on on the three or four sides. You'd get a mix of uh a mixed-use area. You'd get residential, you'd get. Uh mixed-use in buildings that were basically configurable to be residential on two floors or or. basically configurable to be residential on two floors or or commercial, you know, first floor, residential second floor. Um you know, very much like, you know, a a lot of traditional older parks that that seem to be good places for people to congregate. Um a a good place for, you know, restaurant-type businesses that that may wanna have um outdoor seating out front, so they're they're basically, you know, next to a road, next to a green park area. Seen that work for a lot of communities.
I'm trying to envision this, Joe. So so if it were a restaurant, let's say.
Right.
Not a restaurant that is adjacent to the green, but a restaurant that is on the other side of a road from the green? So you, so the road is here, the restaurant, and you you walk across the road from the restaurant to get to the the green area.
It's close and
Think of Commonwealth Avenue in Boston.
I haven't been there in too long.
Houses are on the other side of the road, but this long linear part goes down through the middle between two roads.
Think of Savannah, Georgia.
I mean, even
Atlanta has similar.
There there are towns in in Connecticut like this, you know what? We 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 went down down for a wedding, I don't know, quite a while ago now, and and we stayed in bed and breakfast right on an area quite like this, and it was it was really vibrant. I mean, there were a lot of people out in that park and and there were there were small businesses there and other restaurants facing, and there were events there.
Yeah, I actually think what BlackRock has proposed does some of that, not all of that, but there are portions of the green they've proposed that are where residential fronts the the green, um and then there's the other somewhat uh more square-ish piece of it where it is sort of surrounded by more mixed use. There was some discussion during their review that that might be an appropriate spot for it to be either community green sport space, or if the town someday needed to build a senior center or something, that that would be a spot for that to be plunked down, you know, in conjunction with the green space.
This this doesn't look to me like there's any roads that go along next to these green spaces. Sidewalks or walkways.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh houses fronting or backing on them, but the house the drives to the houses are on the other side of the houses. On on both parts, so I I don't see that replicating what Joe's talking about at all in in this plan so far.
But at the same time, from a desirability standpoint, um you know, we are shooting for a pedestrian-focused village area, so I'm not convinced, I'm not trying to argue with you, Joe, but I'm not convinced that uh that you need to have vehicular travel roads on all sides of your green. Um as long as it it as long as it's welcoming and there's a place to park and you can get out and walk into it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, may maybe it doesn't need to be all sides, but I you 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 basically you you want a space that invites people in that that are not necessarily living in that community and
Right.
And 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 you know, that by by its very nature says, there will be vehicles. Um now, i- if if you could, I mean, I I guess I could envision a you know, a reversal so that so that you had, you know, park mixed-use area road, right? So you didn't you didn't border the park with a road, but you know, I I think then access to the the park area itself is difficult because you're you you you're actually coming through, you know, kind of border property. And I I I I just think that this, you know, business house, you know, fronting on you know, road in in park area is is a rather traditional, you know, uh setup.
There is no parking that's that I see that could work for people outside this neighborhood to come there and park and go to this green space in the middle.
There's diagonal, yeah, there's diagonal.
Parking right right across. That's where the parking is located. They use the street for it. It may not be visible in that version that Ralph has.
A lot of parallel parking right along this whole thing, so that could conceivably feed those to.
If I re- if I recall.
Do you want a parking lot?
No. But what Joe's talking about
He's talking about streets along here.
Right, where where you can park along next to the park. I also don't see buildings situated in such a way that they might be restaurants, cafes, pubs.
That's true.
They're houses.
On on that uh western portion of the linear green, it's all residential.
Yeah.
That's backing onto the the green space.
Right, and and even in the other eastern part, even in here.
There are a couple of mixed-use buildings on the end and parallel, not parallel, but um what the hell do you call that?
I think I think that one.
We're diving down the rabbit hole of development, design review and 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 development review.
Yeah, but
Your your idea is like, where do we wanna put a community facility? How the development builds out around that is not up to you.
I think part of this is 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 how how we want that facility to to serve the community and interact with it.
Right, so we have to define that.
Right, but but I think the I think the conversation is, is it what is the size and shape of this future community facility that you wanna make sure future development accommodates?
It's more than size and shape, is I think what Joe's saying, I'm saying, that how are the edges of that then populated? What are they populated with? A road?
Right.
Possible cafes, restaurants, pubs?
Saying is, we have to tackle that in in more ways than the official map. The official map doesn't give you license to say how private development is done around these community facilities. It gives you license to say where they have to accommodate community facilities. We can marry this with changes to the regs, and you're gonna talk about changes to the regs, where we specify design standards.
We can and should define what those community facilities are.
Absolutely. But but defining what they are doesn't, I don't think we have, I don't think the official map has the authority to define what's around them in terms of private.
No, but I I think I think we have the authority to 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 define that space and how it interacts with with a zone that it's in.
Yeah, I I'm not saying you can't get into this, I'm just saying that we need to be, I'm I'm trying to keep us clear. We're talking about the official map.
Right.
These conversations about defining what the uses will be around these community facilities, we we need to talk about in zoning.
I I agree with that. I agree with that.
But the official map could set the set the stage for saying around this green space, this
Sure.
linear green space of approximately these dimensions need to be the opportunity for public uses, pubs, restaurants.
Right, sure.
Stores, not just houses. And then in the zoning regulations, be more specific
Right.
About what can go adjacent, what kinds of uses can go adjacent to these spaces.
When I look at this, that's what I see.
And I see houses for the most part.
I see houses with with rear-facing garages that are facing the green with walkways on each side. I see that's grayed out here, two mixed-use buildings on this side that face the green. I see larger, I don't know if these are apartments or what, facing this part of this green, and then you've got parking along here. So I think they've, you may not like the design they selected, but I think they've met what you're getting at.
Those are green spaces more for the people that live there. I would have no reason to go there.
Well, I think there is, it's just in the grayed out part, they're not building in the first phase. There is uh community mixed-use, well, appears to be anyway, commercial type. I don't know if they're apartments or if they're what they're intended to be, but there are larger buildings with a street.
You you need more than mowed lawn to to invite
Yes.
Community members who don't
Right.
Live adjacent.
And so that's a good conversation for tonight. What do you wanna do in this community space that you wanna, that you want? Is it, it's if you don't want it to just be mowed lawn, which right now, the area behind the fire and police station is just mowed lawn. So if you want it to be more than that, let's talk about what you think should be in there. Should it should it be playground structures? Should it be um should there be a community building of some sort, you know, someday down the line? Um should it be like Maple Street Park in Essex Junction where there's um smaller rec fields? Uh you know, what what uh basketball courts, that sort of thing? What are what are the types of community facilities that we can populate the dis- the narrative that's gonna go with each of these blobs?
Yeah, I think about what was just just probably a couple of years ago, put up in the corner of the Bristol Green um kids' play structures.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Kids' play structures, uh sort of a walled garden-type area.
Yeah.
Um yeah, something to to draw people in. I agree, not just mowed lawn because that that's
Well, we've talked about a bunch of different functions at various times. I'm not sure exactly what that you got to some of this at the last meeting. I I didn't see anything about it in the minutes. But specifically, some of the functions that we've talked about in the past, whether this is the home for it or not, I'm not quite sure, I guess. It it sounds like something that would enrich a neighborhood like this, but we've talked about a multi-generational facility. Something for elderly people, something for the young, not exclusive to them perhaps. We've talked about some kind of indoor recreation facility. I mean, I you we watch South Burlington and what's happening there. Uh they've at least set aside some lands for some of these kinds of functions, even if they haven't successfully uh gotten them going yet. I also think um well, that that's a facility all by itself, you know, and if you imagine some kind of indoor recreation that's independent of the schools, I mean, is this a community that's ultimately gonna have an indoor swimming pool or something? Sounds far-fetched at this stage, but um that's what we're really talking about, is long-term planning, so I think that maybe it's also something worth considering. I think your notion of sort of making that facility contiguous with usable open space and having that usable open space be something that really does serve as a kind of linkage. I the main problem, not to critique their plan at this stage, is, you know, you've you've got this wonderful destination point at this time, which is uh the rec fields that are under construction at the western edge of the site. What you'd really like to have is a contiguous open space that brings you to it. I I recognize that we've got pathways and all that other stuff. That invites the public, in my estimation. Um it's a little tough with the old Riggs Farm, you know, um sort of undefined at the at at that. But I think this kind of linkage, this house is in the way in my mind. That links you to this field. That invites circulation and use of that um public open space. And if that public open space is in part populated by something that is usable by the entire community, like a you know, multi-generational youth facility of some kind, maybe connected. I'm not sure exactly how you mandate that or how you prescribe that to some kind of active commercial activity that enliven's the whole business.
I think Alex is right there. It needs to be more more thorough definitions in zoning. And it and it kinda goes back to mixed use, but that's, you know, what the what the definition of mixed use is and how you'd like it implemented, but I don't think that's the conversation of the night.
Yeah.
We we have already a brown area in the Bissinette area. And we define future community facilities, including town green, community center, fire police station expansion, farmer's market, uh library relocation, so we we define some brick-and-mortar kinds of activities that might be possible in any one of these brown areas. So if this brown area is relocated more to the middle of this total property, does that mean that some of these areas that position-wise are near what BlackRock seems to wanna, say, could be green space? Maybe that's where the brown areas move. Maybe they move on either side of a area that the developer develops as part of their uh their open space.
You're thinking of like drawing a, since now we know where the Bissinette fields are. And we're not getting into the actual zoning regulations. You basically draw a brown tee for, but you know what I mean? You would draw, here's the fields and we know they're there, so this brown thing instead of here might be, you know, to the road, to to Ralph's point. You've got a green space that goes like this, and there's the field, something like that. Is that what you're getting at? To show we're looking for something like that, or?
Well, some something that responds to their to their proposal also. They're they're implying, I read, some kind of open space down through the middle. That's not the brown area. The brown area are the community facilities which would abut that on, let's say, both sides. And so we take this uh, what were you saying, Alex, a couple of acres?
Two and a half acres, I think.
Two and a half acres and break it down into two one-acre pieces on either side and say, within those areas create structures for community facilities. It might be elderly housing, it might be a community center, it might be a recreational center for young people and old people. But build community facilities on either side of a green swath down through the middle. We're not building the park, we're saying you provide space and activities on either side of that park. And 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 bring it all the way through. I I this this has always been a problem where the the old Riggs Farm is in terms of having something that starts at one sixteen and comes all the way down to to the rec fields. I I see they're calling this the Recreation Drive over here, and that does come for vehicles all the way down here, but we're talking about some kind of a viewscape, some kind of a pedestrian way, a walkable uh way to come all the way down from one sixteen to to the rec fields.
Tom, I think Tom had something.
Yeah, I think this map is a little bit deceiving, and I think you're getting a little bit, in my opinion, just a little bit hung up on what, I think there's already a master plan for the bulk of that property. And I think if you were to take this map and update it and put where the Bissinette fields are as a big blue chunk of already-owned property and replace that small brown chunk that was a future use, I think you'll see that there's a large amount of community facility already there. And if you include the the trail connection, which will come from near the Kinney area back to the fields, and then you utilize the road that's there, in my opinion, that's a fair amount of community facility already. And if you take into account the green space that apparently is in the in the Haystack Plan, I think it's a fair amount of community facility already. I mean, the Bissinette Fields is between nine and ten acres. That is not even accounted for on this on this map that I'm looking at.
Right, it's not it's not on on the one I'm looking at either, Tom. My understanding was that the rec fields were additional land that was going to be developed as community facilities, but the intent of the uh Village uh northwest area was to ask the developer to provide space for brick-and-mortar community facilities. And that's what that small brown
So Joe, just to clarify the original intent, which frankly doesn't matter, cuz you get to reinvent this map now. But this two and a half acres was not discussed principally as a brick-and-mortar location. It was it was it was discussed at the Select Board level back in two thousand nine as, put a park. We'll get a park in there. We need a central organizing sort of community space where people are gonna go and do stuff and not just have it be a big residential neighborhood with backyards and no place to for people to gather. I think that our thinking has definitely evolved, or is evolving on that front, so having some ability to do some brick-and-mortar stuff is a good idea. Um but I think Tom's point is, it it there's, it's well-ta- well-put. There's there's some unit uh push and pull here between, you know, just how much do of the property do you wanna identify for future community facilities outside of the rec fields and the sidewalks and?
Yeah, I mean, you wanna do this thoughtfully, you wanna figure out the facilities that you really want in the community, and you think can happen, and you find where they are. With that, it's about five after nine. We really do need to deal with a couple town plan goals tonight, to wordsmith.
Well, we got through three or four of the brown blobs, so that's good. Maybe we largely got through all of them, even if we're not, I don't have clear consensus from your commission on what to do with this northerly one, but it sounds like the rest of them we've sort of hashed out.
Yeah, I'm almost feeling that we're going about this.
Not to spend more time on this tonight, but I'm almost feeling like we're going about this the wrong way, you know? Maybe we oughta step back one, you know, one step. Instead of looking at the parcels and figuring out what we want to do with them.
Figure out what we need.
Let's get the list of what we really, really wanna do, prioritize it, and place it.
I would concur with that.
That was actually exactly what we did the first time.
Yeah, so next time, let's not look at the maps, let's just think about what we need.
Might be a good opportunity for a survey, too.
Right, but then we didn't have enough guts to designate one place for one thing, and go that far, and that was a mistake.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving on to number four, town plan input from the Select Board review. Basically, wanna look at two action items tonight. They've asked us to go back and think about, and think about the wording, 511 and 521. And Alex, I think you had both of these in your email.
In the email to you for the meeting, there's a rundown of what the conversation was and what those two action items are. Anybody have any questions or clarifying questions? Was anybody else there besides Maggie and Joe? Barbara, were you there? So at least there are three of us there, and actually, Tom's here, so we can clarify, you know, what the sticky point was if needed.
We're just gonna add language from the rural area zoning about the secondary, primary, secondary.
Well, that was my pitch, was still recognize that these are important resources that need to be mentioned, but mirror the zoning regulation language that doesn't say completely stay away from, it says minimize impact on.
It makes sense to mimic that language, I think.
I have obviously no problem trying to.
Right, mimic what we've already decided on for the zoning.
But I support keeping new development away from core wildlife habitat and known wildlife corridors. I think the interior forest area is sort of redundant, because that's where the wildlife goes into the interior forest, so it's already protected.
Yeah, I thought we kinda defined interior forest as well. I mean, the goal, I mean, the overall goal's here, I mean, one wildlife habitat, one movement of wildlife, but two, preserving large tracts, not only for animals, but so that they can stay in current use, be working forests, et cetera. So if you're, you know, if you're cutting apart land and putting in home lots deep into these areas, you're at risk of removing the viability of that use.
The use by the wildlife.
Not only the wildlife, but by us, the two-legged wildlife, right?
So... What are you trying to say?
Well, I mean, predominantly, yeah, I mean, forest, you know.
I don't consider that new development, though.
Well, Joe's saying that's another reason not to subdivide it, not to break it up.
Right.
So when I look at these two, I mean, this is good that they're here, but I kinda look at the whole, what's around it? You know, the whole, all the actions of 52 and all the actions of 51. And what I recall, it's more about access and use, you know? So like with the agricultural lands, you don't wanna subdivide and then build something, and it blocks off the ability to use any of that additional land for agricultural use, because you can't access it, or it's become too small, or, you know what I mean?
And the point made at the Select Board meeting, and I think it's a valid one, is that in situations where government entities, you know, state commissions, are going to go back to a town plan for guidance, right? Those items that don't come through the DRB. If they were to read 511, would they get the same ideas that we have, and, you know, the same goals we had when we put together rural zoning? And rural zoning says that, you know, we have a list of things we're very concerned about, you know, primary resources that we do not allow, right, people to use, right? And we have a set of secondary resources that we ask for minimization of impact, right? Subjective as that is. If we were to look at, you know, what's in this list, right? It turns out that these items are secondary, right? So where this says, when properties are provided, keep any new development away from interior forest areas, yeah. So it's a very prescriptive action item, right? It doesn't intimate that it's okay to be there, but you gotta minimize your impact. It says, you're gonna keep away. Right, so, you know, I can see the concern with that. It's more aggressive than what our zoning bylaw is.
So what's changed by law?
Well, I mean, from a conservationist's point of view, I understand what you're saying. I think from a compromise point of view, right? And having a workable policy that, you know, can be sustained in the town, right? You know, I think what's in the zoning bylaw is a little more reasonable.
So what do you suggest?
Well, I mean, I would suggest on this one, you know, wording, you know, wording it much closer to the zoning bylaws, and saying, when properties are subdivided, you know, keep any new home development away from, you know, primary resources to be defined as blah, 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 and minimize impact to this second set of resources, blah, blah, blah. That pretty much mirrors where we are with rural zoning. Yeah, Bill?
You knew I couldn't keep my mouth shut on this.
I've never known you to keep your mouth shut.
All right, I wasn't involved in writing this part, but I think it's, I think the first problem is it's awkward. And I would suggest rephrasing it, when properties are subdivided, new development should avoid impacting interior forest areas, blah, blah, blah. Now, that pretty much leaves it where it is, but phrased better. But now you can add either to the extent possible, or to the extent practical, practicable, which I think is what the zoning addresses in the secondary resources, is trying to, in other words, trying to minimize it. So I just think it's clearer.
You know, I struggled listening to the Select Board conversation with, okay, if I'm a government entity and I'm looking at the plan, but I'm not looking at the bylaws, right? I guess I would want them to understand what I absolutely forbid, and what I don't absolutely forbid. I mean, it's kinda interesting here that we list a number of things which are secondary, but we don't list anything that's primary. And, you know, primary resources, I think are more important than secondary resources.
Well, it's a fact the primary resources you can't build on anyway. You can't build on a pond, you can't build on a steep.
There's also a reason structurally, these are action items in the ag and forest section of the plan. So the reason that these action items deal with ag and forest is because that's the section of the plan that they're in. It's not, these recommendations weren't intended to repeat the rural zoning list. They were intended to address those particular issue areas that this section deals with. That's why, that's the real reason why it's not a comprehensive list here, not to minimize the importance of the others.
When the Land Trust worked on the Bissinette project, we proposed three lots, and we showed the building location on the lot that the sayers ended up buying. And we showed it so that we left the biggest field possible for agricultural use. And we put the envelope for the building right up against the woods.
Partially in the field.
Partially in the field, but right on the edge of the woods. And the town, excuse me, and the state said, no, you've gotta back away from that. That's a designated wildlife area, there's a deer yard there, and we don't want buildings that close. And so we moved the envelope out. Now, to me, that's keeping new development away. I think keeping new development away is pretty vague. What do you mean by away? Five feet? Twenty-five feet? I like the idea that Bill suggested, in terms of rephrasing this. And the impact on the natural areas will come into effect when you get to Act 250. And there, you will go by their rules. And if your buildings, your envelopes for buildings are too close to what they consider primary areas, you'll need to change that to get a permit.
So refresh my memory, Alex, what are the situations where a government agency would refer to our town plan but not refer to our bylaws?
So that would be in Act 250, remember Act 250? Well, maybe you don't remember, but Act 250 has 10 criteria. Most of them are prescribed, as John's talking about, by the state. One of those criteria, though, is conformance with the municipal plan. So they have their own set that deals with the wintering and water and all that. And then they have another one that is conformance with the town plan. And they look to only the town plan for that purpose, unless it's vague, and then they can look at zoning. The other review system is the Public Service Board, when they are reviewing energy or utility projects. And they don't look at our regs, they look at our plan. And so the plan has to have the right specificity so that they can interpret it. This was the conversation we had more recently about screening and that sort of thing.
Right, so, I mean, it would seem to me that in those circumstances, from a regulatory expectation point of view, we would wanna guide the Act 250 Commission or the PSP to the same level that we would, you know, guide development that comes before the DRB.
Well, and you certainly wanna be consistent. I think that what Barbara said is correct, you can be consistent in one of two ways. We can make the plan recommendations consistent with the zoning regulations we've already approved, or you can make the plan recommendations stronger than the zoning, but that means eventually, after the plan's adopted, we gotta go fix the zoning and sync it up with the plan. So you could do it either way, but, you know, one way requires additional work after the fact, and it assumes that we're gonna go back and fix the zoning.
I should think that would not deter us if we have to do additional work.
I'm sorry, John. If it's a better approach, if it's a better approach to describe it in the plan, in the town plan, differently than in the zoning, then we go back and change the zoning. As opposed to, well, we've got it defined this way in the zoning, we better be consistent with that so we don't have to go back and change the zoning. I think deciding to do that based on we don't have to go back and change something is a bad way to make a decision.
Well, I'm thinking about this a little differently. So if I read 511, right, it's, you know, it has, you know, basically three things to not, you know, to keep development away from. One of the things we discussed long and hard, right, ended up as a primary resource, was steep slopes. Okay, so if I, you know, if I read between the lines of 511, it says, okay, well, stay away from forest areas, core wildlife habitat, known wildlife corridors, but hey, steep slopes, they're not mentioned, they're fair game. Is that how you want this to work in front of the PSP or Act 250?
No, I don't think it's necessary to include all of the areas that we want to not develop right up to. I think it's, this is pointing specifically at forest, core habitat, and wildlife corridors. I don't think there's anything wrong with only pointing to those things as long as what we talk about more, in more detail in the zoning regulations, are consistent with those. And maybe some other things like slope, wetlands.
I'm an Act 250 Commissioner, I read the town plan, I read 51, and, you know, it's pretty specific. I kinda understand that. I don't need to go to the zoning bylaws to understand more about what the town means here, it's unambiguous.
Well, at that point, the town says, Your Honor, if you further your investigation and go to the zoning regulations, you will also see that you can't develop steep slopes, you can't develop wetlands, you can't develop a pond.
Right, but the zoning bylaws, at the same time, if they read into them, they would see that you can, in fact, develop, right, to some extent, wildlife corridors. Now they got a plan that's in conflict with zoning bylaws.
That's what I'm saying, we need to change the wording so that they're not inconsistent with one another.
So can we make these, you call them, primary issues instead of secondary? I know we had a long discussion about the wildlife habitat and corridors, and I thought they were primary.
What's the standard for determining the balance in secondary resources? To minimize impact, what is, what are the magic words in the zoning? Is it to?
Those are the magic words, to minimize impact upon.
Okay, it doesn't say to the extent possible, to the extent practical, just to minimize.
No, and it clearly sets up a two-part task, or not a two-part test, different primary and secondary resources, where one is avoid, and one is minimize impact on. So it should be clear that, one, you have the ability to nibble at the edges of, and the other one, you really do need to stay completely away from.
We're talking about secondary resources here, so if you wanted to be completely consistent with the zoning, you say new development should minimize impact upon interior forest, et cetera.
That's what I suggested in this Select Board meeting.
I'm almost thinking that there needs to be some narrative in the plan about different types of resources and priorities, right? And a change in the action item to kinda, you know, instead of listing this, 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 say, you know, that we need to avoid, you know, our most sensitive areas, right? And have, you know, most sensitive areas defined in the. areas, right, and have, you know, most sensitive areas defined in the plan. And we need to minimize a host of other resources that, you know, make Heinsberg a special place, so to speak. Right, and, you know, have that talked about in narrative as well. Like, that might be a way to approach it.
Well, the way the plan is structured now, at least chapter five, is that we do that in individual sections. So we don't, we don't talk about the, the global suite of resources. We talk about wetlands and the wetland section, flood hazard areas and the flood hazard section, forests in this section, ag in this section, and then onward. But we could, I suppose it, I, I'm not sure the select board was driving quite down that.
I did, I just, I don't think this is rocket science. Honestly, if we can just, um, i- if we're talking about, uh, you know, just minimize impacts um, in these, in these areas as, you know, um, as talked about in the zoning bylaw, I mean.
Can't you say stay away from primary resources, minimize impact?
Yeah, as, yeah, as, as listed, as listed in the bylaw, exactly.
What are primary and what are secondary?
I suppose, I suppose you're intentionally making ambiguous, so you need to refer elsewhere.
How, how are we making it ambiguous?
Don't, don't.
No, I mean, I mean, it's, it's ambiguous, it is that, you know, it's, it's like, uh, you know, i- in, in a legal document, if you, if you coin a phrase and don't define it, right? I don't know what that means, right? Unless the, unless the definition is, you know, s- understood to be a standard, I mean, what's a primary resource? I, I don't know, Webster's isn't gonna tell me that.
But I would think if, if you're on the, either the Act two fifty court or you're looking at the Public Service Board, and I saw that. Me, I would, I would ask the question, well, what is primary and what is secondary? And I would look to the zoning laws to get that appendix.
Especially if the.
Appendix one, primary resources.
Especially if we, eh, eh, say, as indicated in the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Alex, are steep slopes discussed in the chapter five?
Hmm, I don't think so.
I think it's in a separate section.
I don't think it's in there at all.
Tom?
Um, I'm kind of the main driver of this conversation anyway, I believe, from the meeting. What bothered me about five one one and five two one was the fact that they're so prescribed. Basically because of the word keep in five one one and shall in five two one. It basically says if, if a development comes before Act two fifty and they see those two words. I mean, that's grounds basically for shutting something down.
So what would you suggest?
I would use the word maybe encourage, um, encourage new development to minimize impacts on interior forest wildlife. And Alex had an idea for five two one. This one really is the one that bothered me the most.
Because you used the word shall.
Shall, but it also basically says.
Which we intended to use.
Yeah, I understand that, John, but that's what worried me about this section. Because it, it says the town's valuable agricultural resources. Well, that doesn't describe what a valuable resource is. I mean, I mean, that basically could be any piece of land that's not a rock, in my opinion. And, um, and rather than say minimize impacts, it says locations that do not impact these resources. But at some level, you're gonna put a house on an agricultural resource. I mean, or anything on an agricultural resource. So I think it needs to be defined, and I don't think shall is an appropriate word for a visionary document.
I mean, I, I think, Tom, it's, it's shall in conjunction with the rest of the wording. If I said, you know, it shall minimize, right, instead of it shall, you know, this, this is like, you know, it, it shall not, you know, um, basically, y- y- you shall, shall not direct growth in locations that impact these resources. The way I would, you know, fre- you know, rephrase the meaning of that. So if I instead said, you know, you shall minimize impacts to agricultural resources. At least that portion is, you know, I think in the same, um, the same vein, right? The same spirit as what the current bylaws are.
I agree. And I think Alex had a.
Yeah, that's what I was going with the suggestion. You keep the shall so it's not advisory, it's obligatory. But the word minimize allows you some wiggle room.
Right, I mean, you know, my, my only, my, my only, you know, problem, perhaps I'm getting tied up in my shirts on it, is, is in these sentences, we're, we're missing a whole bunch of things that we, we actually think are more important. So that, so that if the, if the Act two fifty board or PSP were to read this and say, oh, you know, that's pretty prescriptive, I understand that. And go no further, right, you know, we may end up on, you know, with development on, you know, thirty-degree slopes because we are trying to minimize impact to the agricultural areas. That's really not what we meant.
Do the, the zoning regs describe what minimize means?
No, no, it's Webster's definition. You use, you use the dictionary when, when it's a term that's not defined.
Well, the problem with that, though, there's differing legal standards of, of, I mentioned it could be to the extent possible, to the extent practical. I mean, there's.
Right. If, if I, yeah, if I hear the word minimize, I think that, okay, the use is allowed. Right, they can put it in this area, but they need to do it in a way, right? That uses the minimum amount of area required, right, to get that use in. So let, so let's say, uh, a person had a land and, eh, eh, a piece of land and there was, there was a, a bit of farm field. Right, and there was a slope at thirty-five degrees, right? And he said, you know, primary resource is the slope. You can't, you can't build twenty-five degrees or more. That, that's off, off limits. And the rest of it was good agricultural land, right? So that if we, if we barred that, right, we would basically be telling that landowner, you can't build here because all of your land is either, you know, agricultural soils, we want you to save, or it's too slope, too, you know, too much slope. And you can't build there. We would basically be taking, you know, development rights away from that landowner. And it's very doubtful we would get away with that, right? I mean, you know, I, I think, I think in the interest of fairness, right, people have to have some expectation of, of use of their property.
Is this something talking about municipal development planning or private development planning? I think that question was asked.
All development. It says when properties are subdivided and development planning, it doesn't, it's not one or the other. It's.
It's both.
Yeah.
I think you're allowed to specify, right?
You can't say municipals X and residential's Y. It's the use of that land regardless, right? It's kind of what we ran into with the screenings, or industrial versus non.
Yeah, you could, you could divi- you could do some differentiating, but that, that's not what this attempts to do.
Well, I understand you're saying that, that the chapter provides appropriate discussion of other resources, natural, um, um, resources. E- except you're not sure about this. You think maybe the steep slopes were admitted.
And we're pretty sure we don't have a section in chapter five that deals with steep slopes.
Maybe there should be. Maybe Joe is, it's something, on something that, I mean, it is a primary resource and, but, um, is it, it's prohibited under state law up to, at what, twenty-five degrees or something?
No, I'm not aware of any state restriction on developing on steep slopes.
Maybe that's a big omission that should be corrected.
It wasn't identified by the Conservation Commission as an important natural resource. I think it's on the list of pri- primary resources in the zoning for the reason Maggie said, which is it's just damn hard to do in the first place. Um, and then it could have some deleterious effects, you know, downstream, sorry, downhill. Uh, but not because steep slopes in and of themselves are a, are a natural resource that, that we place a certain value on, the same way that we do ag soils or streams or flood hazard areas or wetlands. Do you know what I'm saying? It's.
Well, not exactly, because that, I think brings it back to the discussion we had then on hillsides and ridgelines. And because they are, in our opinion, a natural resource, which I think is a steep slope.
Well, we can certainly add in, you know, a whole nother section to this chapter five in the town plan. I don't think that's what tonight's conversation was principally about. I think it was a word. This was a, this was a wording question that the select board asked for input from the commission on. How do you think the wording of these two sections ought to be changed or retained? Cause there were some select board members like Tom that would like to see the wording changed. And there were other select board members who liked the wording as strong as possible and thought that the, what you, what was proposed was pretty strong. So that's what they were looking for.
Basically, my main concern is not, we'll say a steep slope, for example. Even if you were to build something there, which you can't based on our zoning, you're probably only gonna have one house. My problem with this has to do more with Act two fifty overriding our zoning regs based upon a larger development. Because if you can't impact agricultural soils in any way, that would basically mean any development in the village district would be nixed. So all the work that we've done on village zoning and rural zoning wouldn't even apply if it reached the Act two fifty level, based on these two statements.
It, you know, again, this is a, this is a rural forestry and ag area thing, so it's not really speaking of the village, but.
Well, it's agricultural soils, though, Joe, not the agricultural district.
It's in like a forestry section.
Yeah, but he's right. It's not, thi- this section, I don't think is specific to just one part of town. It's talking about our ag resources and forest resources, you know, townwide.
I mean, from, from, from my point of view, I mean, we discussed this, the, the audience for this is really state regulatory boards, right? If we want to direct those boards, you know, we should be directing them to what we've already put in our, in our zoning bylaws, if that's truly the purpose of, of these clauses. Right, I don't think, I don't think this board ever talked to actually revisiting agricultural and, and forestry zoning. Right, and making them tougher. We haven't had that conversation, right? Which would be the conversation we would need in order to enable ourselves, right, through the town plan to go look at that.
I, I'm reading the agricultural district words in our zoning. And I don't see, um, a reason not to go read and study that agricultural district section three point two. Before we, uh, I think we should do that before we make any adjustments to five one one and five two one. I mean, the very first sentence reads to promote sustainable agricultural uses on land so suited and other green slash open space uses on lands less suitable for agriculture. If that doesn't imply a judgment on the part of the Act two fifty commission or the Public Service Board, I, I don't know, I think any attorney reading that on land so suited. Well, what makes it so suited?
We need to read further in order to define that.
I, it's not in here.
Certainly definition of resource to stay away from and those to minimize.
Thanks for coming, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Well, in section three point two, I, I don't see it, Joe. I see two paragraphs of purpose.
So, are, are we talking town plan here or are we talking?
We're talking zoning.
So the section Joe's referring to is, I think, five point twenty-four in your zoning, if you want to flip to that. Maybe, it's between five point twenty-three and twenty-four, I think. It's called rural area.
Four, act, five twenty-four is actually small wind energy systems.
So, that's not the one I meant.
And twenty-five is farm worker housing.
How about twenty-three?
And twenty-three is energy and green building standards.
I, I, I guarantee it's there because we actually got.
Do you see one that's titled rural area?
We got a petition, we, we got, we had a successful petition to bring it to a town vote, so.
No, I, I know what's in there too, cause I was just referring to it with, with our development review coordinator the other day, but Barbara found it, five twenty-six.
Yep, I'm looking at it. Oh, Maggie, were you on the board one more?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know where this conversation is going. I, eh, we just put, um, so much time into, into the rural area zoning. Um, and this language, and, you know, the, it's been vetted through, I don't know how many meetings and hearings and, um, and, uh, planning commission select board, and then a town vote that I, I'm really comfortable using la- using language from the rural area zoning to, to, to mimic that in, in the, um, you know, in the five one and five two.
I mean, I mean, we could say something like in five one, say, when properties are subdivided, keep any new development, um, new development citing, um, consistent, consistent with, you know, the goals and, and definitions of section, you know, five point two six of the zoning bylaws. Right, and then the zoning bylaw says what's primary, what's secondary, what do you do with primary, what do you do with secondary?
Going, going back to five one one. Why can't we just say when properties are subdivided, minimize impact on interior forest areas, core wildlife areas, and known wildlife corridors? And take shall out, take keep out, and simply say minimize impact, which seems to me to be consistent with our initial definition of the purpose of the agricultural district and with the rural area design standards. It doesn't contradict those. You can learn more if you go and read in those, but it does set a general approach, minimize impact.
I agree. It does all that. It's actually a lower standard than our zoning bylaws.
That's, it's, it's, right, our zoning bylaws are more definitive than that statement.
Right, so, so the PSP should be held to a lower set of standards in making their decisions about our town than our own DRB would.
You're saying, you're saying that the D, that the PSP would not consider our zoning regulations in any form?
They don't, they don't need to. I, I think what Alex, what Alex said earlier was that, was that they refer our plan first and only if the plan is ambiguous, right, would they, would they go to the zoning bylaws? If, if you, if, if you say you're gonna minimize use in this, this, and this, right, that's unambiguous. You must, you, you must take these three things into account. Doesn't say, oh, yeah, well, there's a third thing and a fourth thing and a fifth thing in, in the zoning bylaws. It says, look at these three things. It's pretty prescriptive. If I, if I read that, you know, if I just said, you know, minimize, right? I wouldn't have any, um, idea that, yeah, I mean, that sounds reasonable, but I should really go to their zoning bylaws to see what more there might be there, and say.
So, how, how does what we say there now?
Keep any new development away from. How, how does that lead them? How, how does that lead them to, to make a decision based on, on that? Does, I mean, isn't that a vague? What is, what is keep it away from? Like I said before, what, what, how far is away?
Joe, aren't you suggesting to reference, um, to, to change that language and re- reference the minimize to the zoning regs so that the
Right.
Yes.
Act two fifty board has to refer to.
Right, I want, I want the PSB to be directed to our zoning bylaws through our town plan. So, so that, so that they can see that, that, that there's two types of resources, what those resources are defined as, and how you want them treated.
Everybody agrees.
Put on that phrase as defined in our zoning bylaws, section five point two six.
Exactly, and you get a much more comprehensive list.
Site development in, you know, to be consistent with, you know, the goals and definitions of section blah, blah, blah of the Heinsberg, you know, zoning bylaws.
That's fine then.
Yeah. So rewrite it the way you said.
Literally what I would do. Because in all the things I've gone through with FDA audits and all sorts of fun stuff, the more prescriptive you are, even if it's go reference that document, they will go reference that document. If you don't, they'll read that and say, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's prescriptive. Thanks, I'm done.
Great, are we all good with that? So that only took us an hour.
But it's a good solid decision. I mean, I agree with what Joe was just describing.
Well, it was what he said an hour ago.
Ah, I think, I think, you know, I think we can push it in.
I didn't hear that an hour ago.
So, what's the wording now?
Because I would stay out, if, if that's how Act two fifty works and that's how the PSB works, then our town plan should really be general and referring to the zoning regulation.
In cases like this, where, where we're addressing the clause specifically to, to state on these, yeah, we un, we unambiguate it, if that's a word.
Yeah, because then you only got to keep it solid in one spot, not two.
That's a good word. I like that.
So I'll reword, or I'll, I'm not gonna reword anything. I'm gonna inform the select board on Monday that this was discussed for an hour and that the commission we, had general consensus that these two items could be reworded such that they refer directly to section five point two six in the zoning regulations.
Development should be cited consistent with section blah, blah, blah.
Essentially that. Development should be cited consistent with that section.
Rural area design standard.
Yeah, and it goes through all of it. Visual impacts, agricultural resource.
These are just action items in the ag and forest section, it's fine. They'll find that the ag and forest is dealt with in section five twenty-six of the zoning once they get there.
We're gonna redo the whole town plan. Just two action items.
I'm not re, I'm not rewording any of the other action items that also say similar things for flood hazard, wetland, and everything else.
Could be referred to.
Right, I'm not going there. That's all the select board asked for clarity.
That's not considered circular in some fashion. You know, the town plan referring to the zoning.
Which has to implement the town plan.
Which has to implement the town plan. It just seems to me that.
I think you're okay, in this, in this instance.
We don't want to get caught in saying, you know, you just define something by.
Okay, minutes. We're, we're, we're thinking in similar veins, Maggie.
Yeah, so I did have a, um, I did have a suggestion on this, um, when I was reading through and we were talking about the, um, intersections and, and a few of the paragraphs, you know, um, we, you know, talk about a, roundabout at intersection number three, da, da, da. And sometimes in the course of the paragraph, you can figure out which intersection it is, but I'm wondering, would it be helpful? Because we're talking about three, four, five, and the map is not, you know, if five years from now someone wants to, it, the ma, it's all gonna be renumbered, or maybe a paragraph just describing, you know, Servus Street and one sixteen, or Mechanicsville Road and one six, right next to the number. You know, that makes sense.
We could also attach the map to the minutes.
That would be a good idea. Do we really?
Yes, because the minutes reside both in the vault, but also on the website. And so I think it should be easy enough when we create the PDF of the minutes to just add a third page or a fifth, sixth page, whatever it is. Um, with, with the map that's referenced.
I like that.
Yeah, then people can place it in
Right.
Reality, where, you know, when they're driving on one sixteen, they know.
As long as PDFs, you know, live on in a digital sense forever. But no, in the paper version, it'll just have the paper version of the map there too. Does that work? All right, I'll make a note.
The, the fold out version.
Right.
Right, any other comments, changes?
I didn't see any.
Omissions, things you want omitted. All right, do we have motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, I think we still have six votes, so I think we're set. All right, we pass the minutes. Um, new business and correspondence.
Right, so I emailed you all about the Shelburne Planning Commission hearing, uh, on the twenty-fifth. They have some proposed zoning changes. They seem to have it, proposed zoning changes every few months. And I'm embarrassed to say I forgot what they were, uh.
They were that good, huh?
But I emailed them to you, so this is only on the agenda so that the public knows that you received information about it.
The Falls Road crosses the LeBlanc, I think was.
Okay.
Here is up, up to Irish Hill, up, up in that section.
Yeah, some special, very small zoning area where they wanted to allow markets, I think, is what it was, small scale, um, markets. In any case, that was the only correspondence I had for you.
Any news on zoning administrator or town admin or?
Yes, definitely news on both of those fronts. So, um, you recommended a candidate for the zoning administrator position. The select board is taking that up on Monday. Um, everything points to positive reception, so, um, the candidate is still interested, um, and hopefully.
Richmond also.
I believe Richmond is on the same track. Their planning commission also recommended Suzanne, and I, I believe their select board meets on the same day. So, anyways, that looks good, but it won't be finalized until Monday, so that's the Z A position. And on the town administrator front, um, our current town administrator is leaving, as you all know. His last day, I believe, is May twenty-fifth. It's the Thursday, last Thursday of the month, before Memorial Day. Um, so if you want to say goodbye to Trevor, you've got a couple of weeks to do it. Uh, the select board had a special meeting last night to talk about, uh, try to finalize the transition plan, which they did. So they have like a, uh, it's in the packet for that meeting, if you want to look at it. It's a one-page sort of timeline of what they anticipate the process to be. Uh, they, they're going to appoint Renee as, who's our special projects coordinator, works with the town administrator as our interim town administrator during the hiring process. Um, and they hope to have a job announcement out, uh, next week, sometime after their meeting. They're gonna review the job announcement on Monday and then hopefully get it out later that week.
Is Renee applying for?
I don't know if Renee is applying. At the last meeting I was at, she said that she might be interested, but wasn't sure. So I don't know if, I don't, I don't know.
There was a comment at some point that Renee might leave also.
So she's not leaving, as far as I know, and, um, she did, um, to her benefit. Uh, she was clear with the select board about what needed to happen during this interim period. Because she stepped in last time this happened and served for five or six months and worked without any assistance for that time. And, and it was way too much for one person to take on. So she made it clear to them that, A, they needed to hire an, a temporary administrative person to help her, which they agreed to do. And that, um, uh, you know, the, the actual number of select board driven projects needed to be more reasonable. You know, some projects are gonna have to just wait until, yeah, sort of, slow down or go into stasis for a little while. And I think the select board was, all five of them agreed that, you know, it wasn't gonna work, it wasn't gonna happen the way it happened last time, uh.
Entirely on her.
Yeah.
I can't see a better candidate than Renee. I mean, she knows the town and.
Well, and she did do the position for six months. We'll see if she applies.
So the select board has prepared a, a applicant, you know, a
A job announcement?
Job announcement, and they're gonna finalize that?
They're gonna review one on Monday and finalize it. I, I, I'm assuming it's gonna look very similar to the, to the ones we posted. Yeah, thr- two and a half years ago and then three years before that.
Yeah.
Um, when is the next select board meeting where they're gonna go through town plan?
Also on Monday. It's a very packed meeting, so I guess that is worthy of pointing out. The select board has been doing a good job of making it through the chapters of the plan. They slipped at the last meeting because of this conversation about this wording. So they did not get through two chapters, as was their charge. They only got through one. So this coming Monday was supposed to be the last meeting where they talked about chapters. They were gonna talk about chapters seven and eight, but they also need to pick up six because they didn't get to it, so. Um, so they are talking about it on Monday and they will start again with chapter six, which is the community facilities chapter. And then hopefully move through the transportation chapter, which is seven. I doubt they're gonna have time to get through the energy chapter, which is the last one they need to do, chapter eight.
So that, they would put that into their next meeting?
Yeah, and I'll be talking to them on Monday about the, the schedule, because the schedule was very tight. And they needed to finish all their discussion in May, and so they're gonna have to hold a special meeting if they want to stick to that. Otherwise, the public hearing that we had hoped to have in June before everybody spread to the four summer winds, uh, would have to get pushed out into July. Which may have to happen, but we'll see.
And have they changed their meet, regular meeting date like they did last year?
Yes, so if you go to the website and look at the select board page, they have the rest of their meetings for twenty seventeen indicated. And yes, uh, the June meetings are on Thursdays. July as well, and August, and then in September they flip back to Mondays.
So this next one is still a Monday?
Still a Monday, yep. That's their last regularly scheduled meeting for May.
Do you know, are there any applicants this Monday?
For the planning commission? I don't. I haven't seen the agenda, so I don't know if they're leaving that open longer or if they didn't have room. I know Trevor said that he's concerned this, this Mon- this Monday's meeting is overbooked. And, uh, so I, I don't know if there's even time.
Let's see what's on the agenda.
It's not.
It's probably not posted yet. It usually gets posted, uh, Friday, prior.
Okay, all right, anything else?
So did the person, did, did the position get offered to the woman who?
Well, so it's, it's interesting, uh, she was interested in knowing what the parameters of the offer would be, but there is no offer until the select board makes the offer. So we've provided her with what the likely parameters are, based on what the job announcement said and our interviews and all of that. But there's, there'll be a letter drafted and she'll see it and the select board will see it, uh, at, at Monday's meeting and they'll both sign it. And hopefully, it'll be good.
And Richmond is, uh.
I think they're on the same track. I think so.
So they, they, she knows what the offer would be in terms of salary and benefits and so forth?
Yes, pending select board approval.
But that's been discussed with her. That doesn't have to follow.
Correct. And she was good with all that, so she'd said, I'm still interested and should that be the offer, I will accept it on Monday.
All right then.
Okay, motion?
Second.
All right, thanks, everybody.
You can have it if you want. If you want, if not, I'll use it, absolutely.
You wanna join us?
Um, so, uh, one of the things that, that you wanted to do.